You are live.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Doug Chipman. I'm Mayor of the City of Clarence. It's my pleasure to welcome you to this virtual council meeting tonight. Could I ask you to bow your head for the council's prayer? Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee of our safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the City of Clarence. Amen. I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet tonight, pay respect to elders past and present, and recognise their continuing spiritual connection with the land. This virtual meeting via Teams is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege. There is a link to the agenda papers on the council website. And I've been advised by the general manager that our voting procedure is not visible to those online, and so we need to be very procedural as we go through that. So I'll ask for your indulgence with that when it comes to vote, please. Questions and deputations have been received from members of the public and will be read to us by the acting general manager at the appropriate stage of the meeting. I would also like to advise that we are still monitoring the COVID situation very carefully with a view to being back in the council chambers physically with members of the public in attendance as soon as possible. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the recent passing of former councillor and alderman, Dr Michael Redet. Michael was a long-serving member of council. He was a councillor from 1981 to 1988, deputy warden from 1986 until 1988. And following Clarence's proclamation as a city in 1988, he was an alderman until retiring in 1998. Michael was very dedicated to serving the community and strived to do his best for the people of Clarence. Notably, he initiated the formation of the Clarence Community Band in 1986, which went on to become the esteemed Clarence City Band that we have today. He was also at the forefront of the introduction of neighbourhood watch in several areas of the city. On behalf of council, I would like to express our condolences to Michael's family. I note that we have an alderman in attendance, so there are no apologies. I would ask for any declarations of interest of alderman or close associate. There being none, I'd like to move to item three, which are a number of omnibus items which will deal with collective and one at the conclusion of those items. Firstly, item 3.1, confirmation of the minutes for the 7th of February. As circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Are there any concerns or comments on the previous minutes? Thank you. For item 3.2, I'd like to table significant diary entries from myself, deputy mayor and other aldermen over the previous period. Item 3.3, council notes the workshops conducted on the 15th and 21st of February and the agenda brief of the 25th of February.
Mr Mayor, right, have my hand up.
Thank you, Alderman James, please go ahead.
Thank you. My question is to the mayor in relation to, can you give us a timeline when the Rosney Hill lease will be considered by council?
At this stage, I can't do that. Negotiations are continuing and indeed, I expect that information will come to hand and be prepared for a council meeting in the future. And in that sense, it's a matter for council.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on to item 3.4, there are no petitions tabled. 3.5, reports from outside bodies. We have reports from, sorry, acting general manager. Did you have a petition after all?
I do, I do, Mayor, thank you. I have a petition received from 46 signatories requesting council to undertake a planning study to reclassify land in the precinct from rural living B zone, minimum two hectares, to rural living A, minimum one hectare, and to submit the outcome to the Tasmanian Planning Commission for approval. That's the petition I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. Pardon me. Moving on to 3.5, reports from outside bodies. I note that for the copying refused disposal side joint authority, that we have a summary of meetings and also a quarterly report to be considered later at this meeting. Alderman Walker, did you wish to comment further on at this stage?
Not at this stage, no, thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report from TAS Water or from the Greater Hobart Committee. Reports from council special committees and other representative bodies. I note that we have quarterly reports from the chairs of the Bicycle Steering Committee, Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee, the National Resource Management Committee and the Sport and Rec Committee. Do any of the chairs wish to speak to any of those reports? Alderman Chong?
No, sorry, Mr Mayor, I'm just waiting to table some others in a moment.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to commend once again the officers on the Natural Resources Management Report, the significant amount of work done by volunteers in local coast care and land care groups, and recognising that it's been a particularly difficult quarter with the amount of rainfall that we had and the speed of growth of everything, including the weeds. And thank all the people involved in addressing those issues.
Thank you, Alderman Warren. Alderman Newington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, same as Alderman Warren there, I mean, the work done by the staff in the natural resources and tracks and trails and bike, you know, has been exemplary with the, you know, the rainfall that we've had. But I'll just have to mention the special work done by Mary McParland, who's also obtained a couple of grants for the council and most of her help was work continuing the great work that's been done in the Bike Park, which is an amazing effort with the amount of time she's got available. Overall, the work that we've done in that space, you know, we all know that those tracks and trails in the Bike Parks, you know, are very well valued by the community and we appreciate that. And obviously, we've got some more coming up on the sport and recreation space with a consultation on that later, where I'll speak to that when we get to that area. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. If I add on the Sport and Rec Committee, the committee itself is in abeyance at the moment. We've had two more resignations there, which have been for personal reasons and not associated with the operations of the committee. The business of the committee is being managed by a working group chaired by myself and the alderman that were on the committee, and will be initiating a process to repopulate the committee with members as soon as possible.
Mr Mayor, is there a timeline in relation to, obviously, resorting back to its normal operations as part of the community input?
Thank you, Alderman James. We are keen to do that as soon as possible. The, what we need to do though is first amend the constitution. At the moment, any new positions that we appoint from members of the public would only be until October. We think that's probably too prohibitive. And so we will be bringing a constitutional amendment back to council to consider. Thank you. Alderman Evans?
Thank you. Just on that, how many ordinary community representatives likely to, or how many should be on that committee?
The, under the current constitution, it provides for three members of the community to be on the committee.
Thank you.
Alderman Newington?
Look, I'd just like to add, just to put it out in public notice, we had three plus a proxy and we had one resigned at least 12 months ago. And then the other one had to resign because he had appointed a rugby club, which was obviously a conflict to be representing the community where he had a potential conflict of interest. And yeah, and then the last two have had personal reasons pulled out. But the issue that I'd like to clarify there, Mr Mayor, if I can, is we're looking at this role of committees and asking people to commit to four years at times. And it's something that was raised by some of the members on the committee. So I think not only the constitution in relation to how we appoint them, but the terms and even some of the specific roles that we face is something that I think we need to look at across all of the committees. But yeah, I look forward to getting it started as soon as we can because we've got some very important work to do after we hopefully finish the consultation on the strategic plan.
Thank you. Any further questions on the single and joint, sorry, the reports of special committees? Alderman Chong, you had some other committee appointments to report on?
Yes, I did, thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I, I've tabled the minutes of the Cultural History Advisory Committee from November and also the Richmond Advisory Committee from December. And can I just say, in relation to the rack of Bevis Ross, who has been the football club representative for 27 years, resigned over Christmas?
We need to write to him with a vote of thanks, which I'm only too happy to sign. Alderman Chong, if you could arrange for that, please?
I certainly can, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman James?
Yes, I did provide to the acting general manager a copy of the minutes of the Hara Community Centre. And I believe they will be tabled tonight as part of the normal process. So I thought that may have been mentioned by the acting general manager because I provided those on Friday, if you recall. Mim?
Thank you, Alderman James. We'll note that you've tabled those, so thank you.
Mr Mayor?
Sure. Alderman Von Berto?
I realise that you can't see me and I'm not sure whether you can see that my hand is up. Just to let you know that I have tabled the CPAC meeting minutes for the 9th of December 2021 via email today.
Thank you very much, Alderman Von Berto. Which brings me to item 3.8, that the information in the weekly briefing reports of the 7th, 14th and 21st of February be noted. Any questions on those, please? Okay, I'd like to invite an omnibus motion that the officer's recommendation for all those items be adopted. Thank you, Alderman Peers. Second, Alderman Chong. All those in favour, please raise your hands. And I have 11 votes and all, thank you, all those against?
Mr Mayor, I'm trying to raise my hand, but I'm not at time, butting in support as well.
Thank you. In that case, I can declare the motion was carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to public question time, item four. We have no matters on notice. We do have two members of the public with questions without notice. General manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first question is from Lisa Chulick from Severn Mile Beach. The question is, my questions are in relation to my last questions on notice at the 17th of January 2022 meeting regarding the walking track at Severn Mile Beach. You confirmed how many times a year it is maintained and under what strategy, which was great, but my questions are, when this area is maintained, what is the detailed scope of work? Also, is there a certain height the area is slashed to? Or is the grass and bracken fern cut down to a ground level every time it is maintained? Ross Graham will answer this question.
Mr Graham?
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor. The scope of work includes mowing what is achievable and brush cutting the remainder. Typically, it is cut to 50 to 75mm height and range. Large branches are removed to allow maintenance to occur and to keep the area clear for access. The work is undertaken as close as achievable to fence lines and at least 15 metres wide to create the fire break.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Graham. The second public question without notice is from Mr David Griggs of Riston Vale. Mr Griggs has two questions. The first is in relation to 20 Scots Road, Riston Vale. There is a building being constructed with the use of shipping containers and a roofed area. Has a planning application been lodged for this building? Has planning approval been granted for this structure? And has it been inspected for compliance with building regulations? Also, the surrounding area has had a large amount of fill material tipped on it. Is there a total height that this should not exceed? I have requested information from the relevant department. The response is, in relation to the questions regarding 20 Scots Road, Riston Vale, I can advise that the site is under investigation and a full response will be provided to the next council meeting. Mr Griggs's second question is, will council set aside an increased amount in the upcoming budget to plant more advanced deciduous trees in the non-bushland parks and reserves throughout Clarence to increase tree cover in suburbs for shade for the increasingly hotter climate? Using drought tolerant species with monies for management of these trees and for this plan to be going on into the future, ongoing into the future. Mr Graham will answer the question? Mr Graham? I can answer if you like.
No, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Acting GM. Council's tree policy adopted in 2021 recognises the need to plant more trees for the benefit of the community. The next phase is the development of the sustainability strategy and the urban forest strategy, so council can consider the framework of establishing the right trees in the right place. After this framework is developed, specific projects can be considered by council in future budget years, noting tree planting projects require ongoing maintenance to promote healthy tree establishment.
There are the questions. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item five, we have deputations by members of the public. Note, we have four of those.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have four deputations this evening, all in relation to 52 Richardson's Road. The first one is from Nick Masters and Dean Richards regarding review of the urban growth boundary 52 Richardson's Road. Thank you for discussing our application and the report on council survey. We are positive that with the information provided today, council will be confident in endorsing the officer's recommendation. On 9th of February 2021, council resolved to support our application to amend the urban growth boundary at 52 Richardson's Road. This decision gave us the confidence to invest significant time and resources and to start active consultation with the local community. From our face-to-face consultation, it was clear that most community concerns raised were based on an understandable confusion that the indicative lot layout in our application was reflective or of what a future development would look like. This layout was only to model infrastructure capacity and not to reflect a detailed future master plan design. Once this and our vision was better explained, the vast majority of people that had initial concerns ended up being supportive of our vision. We appreciate the additional community consultation provided by council's public survey. Though we believe the survey results were significantly impacted by inaccurate information widely distributed to the community, we were reassured to see that the main concerns raised with any future development were consistent with what we heard during our own face-to-face consultation. We were also pleased to see a large number of survey respondents in favour of a future development on the property. Traffic flows is clearly the main concern with any potential future development. Our engineers are extremely confident that developed solutions will effectively manage and increasing, will effectively manage any increase in traffic flows and also improve the currently underperforming intersection at Bayview Road. We have provided all available information and analysis addressing the RL US1 information sheet that was requested by the minister in March 2021. Two other applications to amend the urban growth boundary were approved last year based on the same data and information as we have included. We have followed the process provided by council and now look forward to council endorsing the officer's recommendation to forward the provided analysis and other information to the minister for his consideration. That's the end of deputation one. I'd like to go on to a deputation received from Catherine O'Donnell regarding review of the urban growth boundary 52 Richardson's Road. Thank you for the opportunity to again speak to you on this matter. Thank you also for taking the time to consult with the affected communities. The response to the consultation was very large with 679 responses. Overwhelmingly, the local community told you that it does not support the proposal to extend the urban growth boundary at 52 Richardson's Road. 77.3% of the respondents do not support the extension and a further 5.6% who took the time to engage are undecided and have questions about it. Only 17% support the proposal, predominantly because they want to buy property there. The main concerns of those who don't support it are lack of infrastructure, traffic, and not changing the urban growth boundary out of sequence. Interestingly, there are in line with the lack of support from Mr Kim Evans, the Galloki City Council, and council's own staff, who originally advised that the application not be supported. In short, 525 of your constituents took time out of their day to tell you they do not want this extension to be made. And you can be fairly sure that there were many more who feel the same way. Families who submitted one response still have individual votes. Council needs to now ask itself, why do we consult? Do you consult merely to tick a box and say, well, we did that? Or do you consult because to know what affected people think and take their views into account? The people of Lordedale and surrounds are watching you now. They are looking for the answer to those questions and those answers will help the people of this area make decisions on who to vote for this year. So ask yourselves, am I an alderman who listens to my constituents and acts in their best interests or not? It's the end of the second deputation. The third deputation has been received from Graham and Eileen Patterson regarding review of the urban growth boundary 52 Richardson's Road. We would like to take this opportunity to voice our opinion on opposing any adjustment to the urban growth boundary with regards to 52 Richardson's Road Sanford. As a long-term residents of Lordedale, we have in the past seen the township experience steady growth with accompanied infrastructure to allow for a sustainable lifestyle. Of late, we have seen accelerated development in our area that has not been supported by infrastructure such as school expansion, road projects and utility resources. This has resulted in a downgrade of lifestyle for the residents of Lordedale and surrounding townships. If this adjustment to the urban growth boundary is granted, it will further increase the loading on all the resources that are at the moment stretched to overcapacity and any remedy to this we can only assume will be met by the ratepayers while proponents fly off with the profits. It is our opinion that the council officers represented by Mr Ross Lovell, manager for city planning, on the 21st of February 2021's original conclusion of no less than eight dock points was correct in that the development was not to be supported. We urge all aldermen to reject this application and withdraw the request to amend the urban growth boundary being option two, page 96 on the agenda. That is the end of deputation number three. Last deputation was received from Lisa Berryam regarding the urban growth boundary 52 Richardson's Road. As nearly 80% of the Clarence community expressed opposition to extending the urban growth boundary for the 52 Richardson's Road proposal in the recent YOUR SAY survey, it is perfectly clear what the Clarence community wants and why. I respectfully ask you to encourage all 12 CCC aldermen to listen to and respect their constituents' wishes and to see reason to vote against this proposal or support a motion to withdraw the proposal at the next council meeting on Monday, the 28th of February. That is the end of the four deputations. Thank you, Mayor. You're on mute, is, you're on mute, Mayor?
Thank you, acting general manager. I'd like to now advise that we intend to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. We have two items there. Firstly, item 6.1, a development application at 49 Cambridge Road, Belre for a one lot subdivision. But I invite a move and a second, please. Moved, Alderman Peers? Second, Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Mayor. I went down and had a look at this subdivision and really, I think it's fine. I'm a, anything to get rid of those sheds at the back, I think will be a bonus for the area. The church is opposite, so it's not going to have an adverse effect on that. And the applicant, even though it's not what they're going to build, has put in what a build would look like to show can comply on that site. So Mayor, I see nothing wrong with this and I support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman Newington?
Oh, no, thanks, Mr Mayor. I think the report's quite comprehensive and shows that this would be a wise use of space and another addition to housing stock in our community.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is, excuse me, quite an unusual application because in the first instance, the proposal on page 33 and under the general...
33 and under the general residential zone, the proposed lot two, has an area of 219 square metres, which is less than the minimum size allowed by the acceptable solution of 450 square metres. The officers have then gone to the performance criteria and addressed the fact that there's no specific minimum lot size when the performance criteria is applied. And what it has said, what the officers have said here is that they have provided a indicative plans of a two-storey dwelling, which is only submitted for the purpose of demonstrating how the lot can be developed in accordance with the standards of the scheme. This is quite unusual because in the first instance, the fact of the matter that the building has been referred to is quite unusual because when we are dealing with subdivisions per se, then we are dealing with that particular lot size and not any dwelling which can be purportedly built on the site. It's very interesting to note that if this particular proposal goes through, then the two-storey dwelling, which has been referred to in the performance criteria on pages 34 and 35, is talking about dwellings when in fact we should only be talking about a subdivision. And a subdivision in this particular instance refers to exorcising a lot from the existing lot and therefore having a particular proposal for a subdivision to be assessed. It's quite unusual, Mr Mayor, for a building to be submitted. And I might add that the actual plans of this are part and parcel of the assessment that the planners have actually gone through and assessed this particular subdivision basically on what plans have been provided. And what's interesting as well, that these plans are in fact, they haven't been endorsed by any professional drafting or so on. So it would appear that these plans have been done by obviously the people, it seems, who actually...
Alderman James, I'd hope you bring the relevance to this to the fore because the who draws up the plans is not relevant. And I think it's important too to note that those indicative plans, and I'd hate for the public to get the impression that there's a de facto building approval or planning approval in any of that. This is purely a subdivision application and the purpose of that drawing, I think, was to indicate that it was achievable from a building point of view. So please, let's ensure that we're dealing with the facts.
Yes, but if I can refer you, Mr Mayor, to page 32 and paragraph under 3.2 under the proposal, and I quote, "The proposal includes indicative plans for a two-storey dwelling, which are only submitted for the purpose of demonstrating how the lot can be developed in accordance..."
Thank you.
"...however, indicative dwelling plans meet all the relevant acceptable solutions, including setbacks, height, privacy and provision of private open space car parking." So my question through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Lovell, Mr Lovell, does that mean that the building does not have to be flagged as a development application and that by the very nature of us approving this particular project tonight, that it will actually approve the building to be constructed as per the indicative plans?
Mr Lovell?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to answer that, but if I put a bit of context around the plans, the performance criteria in question is on page 34. And it's around being satisfied that the subdivision will create a lot that's suitable for its intended use. So the plans have been designed to demonstrate that it is possible to develop the lot for its intended purpose. And in doing so, what the concept plan, indicative plan does, is show that you could actually build a building that complies with the acceptable solution, which leads to your question. Yes, if that building was proposed on that site, if the subdivision were approved, then complying with the acceptable solutions, it wouldn't require a permit.
And just a further question, does that mean, Mr Lovell, that if this particular proposal, subdivision proposal is approved this evening, is approved by council at this meeting, does that mean that the people can actually go ahead and build that building and do not need a permit?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Peers.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank people for their contribution. As it said, that if this is approved, we know now that a building can fit on that site with these, so I support the recommendation, Mayor.
Thank you. So the motion before us is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. Would all those in favour please raise their hand, electronic hand? And I do need to wait to hear from the acting general manager that the votes have been properly recorded because the picture on the screen isn't transmitted.
Good to go. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. We have 11 votes for, all those against. Please, if you could blow all those hands.
Just doing that now, Mayor.
So all those against, please raise your hand.
I just had mine up, anyway, up it goes.
So I have one against. The motion is carried. Thank you. And moving on to item 6.2, we have a development application at 2 Bar Street, Riston for three multiple dwellings. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Alderman James. Do I have a second please?
It wasn't Alderman James, sorry.
Oh, you got your hand up, sir.
Yeah, well, sir, it's coming down. Didn't have a chance to take it down, but it's down, Mr Mayor.
It's up again.
Well, sorry.
Thank you. Do I have a mover and a second please? Moved Alderman Newington, thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Blomley, thank you. Alderman Newington?
Well, let's hope this one's straightforward. Look, once again, I think the report sums it all up. You know, we're looking at infill housing as a major part of our attempts to increase the housing stock in the community and the size of this land. And the report clearly shows that it complies with the scheme and we should be supporting it. So I'd encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley?
No need to say anything. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Any other speakers?
Yes, I'm putting my hand up.
Thank you. Alderman James, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For those who have visited the site, and I would imagine each and every one of you has, it just seems to impact that two-story building blocks towering in an area where there is these sort of low-built buildings that are basically been in, built in the era and the time that they have been basically developed. Now, these are going to detract and cause visual impact by the apparent size and scale of these buildings. You have two, two-story blocks that detract from all of the other buildings in the area. And East Riston, by its very nature of having to develop over the years from a very historical place because of the very nature of where the pump used to operate from and out of, and also to what has actually taken place in the area of development in that particular area. So you have these visual impacts that are caused by the parent scale and size. And even though it has been said that there are other two-level buildings on the site, these two-story building blocks are towering over the residential properties of number eight Riston 14 and also number 12. So the fact of the matter is that what we really need to do is be cognizant of the fact that where we are building and where we are wanting development to take place, it's in keeping with the area in question. Now, once, or should this particular development go ahead, then open the floodgates, in my opinion, to other two-story block, building blocks of flats, which akin to, in my opinion, to actual apartments in a very, very sensitive area within East Riston. So I think that what we've done here is that the visual impacts under clause of the 4.2P3 addresses the visual impacts. And also, you can say that notwithstanding the maximum height above ground level is 7.47 at their highest point above natural ground level, they are imposing by the very nature that these are blocks, building blocks, that are towering over the other properties in the area and will set a dangerous precedent for development to take place because we have approved these two block units and therefore there is no reason for knocking back, in my opinion, any of the others that would be built in that area. I will not support the recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I visited the property on Saturday. I visited 4 Bar Street, I should say, which is next door to the property. There are two issues that I would like to raise. The first one is privacy and the second is the impact on existing solar energy installations. So the privacy, the units looking towards 4 Bar Street, there's a good separation between the proposed buildings and the existing building, but the living rooms are proposed to be on the same side, so they would be directly looking at each other. It would benefit from some privacy screening. That's not mentioned in any of the conditions, but I would hope that that would be a compromise to be reached between proponent, proposal and the neighbours. But the solar panels, we observed on Saturday that the house at 14 Riston has an entire roof of solar panels and yet on page 57 of the report, it says there are no solar installations located within proximity of the site that would be compromised by the proposed development. Now, I had a look at the shadowing diagrams in the report and it seems to me like number 14 Riston Street Road is under shadow for a significant proportion of the day. So I just want to, may I through you, Mr Mayor, ask Mr Lovell to comment on that as to whether those panels were in place when the assessment was done and whether that was taken into account. I noticed it doesn't appear in any of the representations, so I'd just like some comfort that that was considered.
Mr Lovell?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, but that was, the property was inspected and the site was fully observed. The advice in the report is from the planner who investigated the site. That's all I can point out at this time.
Any other speakers? Okay, write a reply, Alderman Newington. Oh, sorry, Alderman Walker, just spotted.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the ability. Look, I also visited the site from the neighbouring property and we are sitting as a planning authority. We have to consider this in the planning context. And on that matter, I mean, if you've spoken vigorously tonight against this, if you believe there are strong reasons against this, then I think it's your role as an alderman to take the effort to draft the refusal, to circulate it. I might have been in line by that. There might have, I might have found grounds to not support the motion. However, no such refusal was generated by any stretch. So, you know, it's a soft no and then there's the diligent no, which is the refusal motion circulated to your colleagues. I love this part of Clarence. It is, it's off route. It is quiet. It is laid back. And, you know, the term infill can sometimes seem a bit awely on it. It kind of, I understand that term when you're neighbouring a CBD and then the one after. Infill doesn't necessarily seem right when you almost come to the last general residential outpost before a taggo where things start getting into minimum lots. That said, it is general residential. That is how it's zoned. And I am to assume from the motion we just passed that these lots could be, you know, around the 219, should they wish to have done so. It doesn't, it isn't necessarily, it isn't in keeping. There's nothing like this occurring in this area, but the plan says it can happen. So there haven't been strong reasons to suggest otherwise and that is why I think, I believe this will pass. But I understand that that feeling of this is unlike things in the area. There are certainly double stories, properties in that area and to suggest otherwise is just fanciful. But infill like this on what are generally pretty large style blocks is unusual. I might just pose a question. I know that Alderman Warren raised privacy. I think that privacy was largely around that. Just to confirm, there aren't, with you, Mr Lovell, are there, there weren't any planning conditions identified as grounds to actually create frosting, frostering, can't even say the word, frosted windows or translucent sort of windows along neighbouring properties?
Mr Lovell?
Yes, through you, Mr Mayor. Because the discretions that related to setbacks were actually to do with the internal setbacks in terms of, in relation to the privacy issue, there was no, and it complied with the acceptable solutions in relation to the privacy of the adjacent properties or adjoining properties, there was no potential to recommend a condition for the screening for the purpose of privacy of neighbours. So it was an internal issue rather than to adjoining properties.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
Any final speakers before Alderman Newington has the write a reply? Alderman Newington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Now, I think we might as well just vote on this one.
Thank you. So the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. Would all those in favour please raise their electronic hand? I have 11 votes. If you could clear the hands, please, Acting General Manager.
Onto it, Mayor.
And those against, Alderman James, thank you. So the motion is carried and that concludes our business as a planning authority. Moving on to item seven, reports of officers. We have a report on a petition for a boundary fence at 13 Waverley Court, Belray. The recommendation is that we note the intent of the petitioner and advise the petitioners that we don't intend to require the owner to erect a boundary fence against the Waverley Flora Park. Could I have someone move and second that, please? Thank you, Alderman Kendy, as a mover. Seconded, Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Kendy?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor, as per the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
As per Alderman Kennedy's recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I note that the petition actually asked council to erect a fence, a fence which is between our land at a popular area with much true traffic, but that the recommendation says that we won't require the owners of 13 Waverley Court. Now, I appreciate the Boundary Fences Act, but that doesn't preclude council from erecting a fence if the other owners don't wish to do so in order to protect our property. And I think that the, in short, I can't support the recommendation because we were already... that in short, I can't support the recommendation because we were asked to erect a fence and we've said, no, we won't require someone else to. So I don't think that um recommendation B actually addresses the uh the request of the petition and I won't be supporting.
Noted. Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Are there any other speakers? Uh, Alderman James? You're muted, Alderman James?
Uh, my question is to the acting general manager. On page eighty five, two point six, it says, and I quote the second paragraph, "The Boundary Fences Act also provides that council is not liable for the cost of a boundary fence adjoining public space, such as, in this case, Waverley Floral Park." The the acting general manager advised me as to do we actually contribute uh to a boundary fence when it abuts a playground or a park, like a um a children's play park or a a public play park as distinct from a public space?
Uh, acting general manager?
Thank you for the question, Alderman James. I'm going to have to take that on notice unless, of course, one of um the executives is able to answer that question. If not, I'll take that on notice and and reply accordingly.
It's fairly, it's fairly important we know the answer to to that, Mr. Mayor, because in many instances, council has.
Thank you, Alderman James. I'll just see if we're able to get an answer. If you hold for a moment, please?
Oh, yes, thanks.
And Mr. Lovell or Mr. Graham, are you able to assist? Looks like uh.
Yeah, through Mr. Mayor, I'll probably have to take that on on notice. I mean, for playgrounds, we most of the time specifically fence those areas themselves. Um, um, the, it it is actually very rare that we um contribute to to fencing um when when it's adjacent, um, our we have public open space we have, but it's not often that we actually undertake that.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, um, I understand that if um it is a matter of public safety in relation to a play park, we we do contribute. Um, but um in general, as um Mr. Graham's indicated, we wouldn't be making a contribution.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Uh, yes, look, um, there have been instances over the years where in fact they that the council has contributed to a to the fence and also undertaken repairs to the fence because of the very nature of it being close to a a play park. So, look, uh, it it just seems to me and I I I don't like sort of uh voicing my opposition to this motion, but there is there is a grey area here and I would have thought in the circumstances, if there was a a number of petitioners who were seeking that, that they would have actually been able to uh check this out and and also seek for council to provide. So, look, uh, having said that, I have been aware of of a number of circumstances over the last thirty odd years that I've been on this council that in fact we have contributed, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Um, are there any other speakers? Alderman Edmonds?
Thanks. Um, yeah, there's a there's a few moving parts with this one. Um, I think I'll support the motion as is with the answers that we got, but um I would be keen to maybe see if there's another way forward with some either wordsmithing or a bit more um consultation led by the Arsenal, the council. So that's my position.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, uh, write a reply um there, please, uh, Alderman Kendy.
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. So the officer's recommendation as it stands, all those in favour, please raise your hands. I have uh ten Alderman with um, could you lower the hands, please?
Oh, cutting through there.
And those against, please? I have two against, uh, Alderman James and Alderman Mulder. So the motion is carried. Now move on to item seven point four governance, that the quarterly report to the thirty first of December be received by council. Moved Alderman Chong, seconded Alderman Edmonds. Thank you, Alderman Chong.
Um, can I just commend the producers of the report? I think it's a really great visual representation of of what's been happening in council and very easy for people to understand.
Thank you, Alderman Edmonds.
Uh, yeah, just to echo those thoughts that I think our publications have come a long way uh recently and are really easy to read and I, as always, find the um quarterly report enlightening reading.
Any other speakers, please? Okay, so I don't think there's any need for a write a reply. I'll put the motion that the report be received. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That's carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item seven point four point two, consultation review, the urban growth boundary at fifty two Richardson's Road. Uh, Alderman Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I wish to move an alternative motion that was circulated via email earlier today.
I see Alderman James hand up. I assume you're seconding it?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berto?
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify first that every Alderman has a copy of the motion?
Uh, has anybody not got a copy? Please uh let me know. Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go through very quickly what the motion entails so that the public are aware of the details. Part A, that in response to the matters raised by the Minister for Planning in his the date fifteenth of March twenty twenty one, council notes that the additional information supplied by the applicant on the twenty seventh of July and the seventh of September twenty twenty one does not sufficiently meet the relevant RL US one requirements for council to adopt the information as its response to the minister. B, after referring the proposed amendment to all southern councils, it is aware not all of those councils agree to the proposal as required by the RL US one. C, after referring the proposed amendment to the relevant state service agencies, state authorities and other infrastructure providers, it is aware that the Department of State Growth is not supportive of the current proposal. Part B, the council notes the quality and breadth of issues covered in the responses to the council survey regarding support or otherwise of the proposed Sanford Lauderdale Urban Growth Boundary Amendment, particularly noting seventy seven percent of respondents do not support the proposal. Part C, that council withdraws its request of the ninth of February and the third of March twenty twenty one to the Minister for Planning to amend the Sanford Lauderdale Urban Growth Boundary and advises the minister not to proceed to amend the urban growth boundary due to the information noted in A and B above and for the specified reasons attached to this motion. But the details, part D, sorry, that the details and conclusions included in the specified reasons attached to this motion be recorded as the reasons for council's decision in respect of this matter. And very briefly, because I'll probably not be able to cover all of the reasons uh in my time, at the twentieth of September twenty twenty one council meeting, the officer's report advised on pages one hundred and twenty nine to one hundred and thirty two that several requirements within pages four to five of the RL US one have not been adequately addressed. And council needs to be confident that a detailed and targeted response to the relevant RL US one requirements has been provided to the Minister for Planning to ensure compliance with his request in his letter dated the fifteenth of March for a direct response to RL US one. Also, on page seven of the RL US one, the Minister for Planning will require all planning authorities in the relevant region to agree to the proposed amendment. This is not the case. A number of the councils, the southern councils, did not support. And in fact, Glenorkie City Council went further and made it very clear that there's insufficient justification for the extension and was concerned that ad hoc requests on the expansion of the urban growth boundary will make it increasingly difficult to promote the vision of the Hobart City Deal. Mayor Beck Thomas goes on to say, given the number of requests for changes being received and that the cumulative impact of those approved requests is not being monitored on a regular basis, the value and role of the regional strategy and the work being undertaken on the metro, the metro plan through the Hobart City Deal may be significantly compromised. Also, the State Growth Secretary made it very clear that there was further work needed in relation to strategic justification for such a proposal. And also noted that although this particular proposal is in relation to the expansion of the urban growth boundary, the impacts related to infrastructure are not insignificant, particularly in relation to traffic. It's also important to note that the quantity and quality of the public consultation representations against the proposal, five hundred and twenty five of the six hundred and seventy nine, should be a critical factor in withdrawing council's support for the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. Time is up. Alderman James?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer my colleagues to page ninety four of the officer's report under nine, strategic plan and policy implications. At our meeting on the twenty second of March twenty twenty one, the decision was that prior to considering any further council request to the Minister for Planning to amend the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy strus, including an extent, any extension to the urban growth boundary within Clarence, council as a matter of policy and best practice undertakes broad public consultation before determining whether or not to support a particular request. And two, that the feedback received be included in any report to council in the same manner as a land use planning application. Now, that is part of council's policy. We made that decision. As a matter, council as a matter of policy and best practice undertakes broad public consultation before determining whether or not to support a particular request. There has been, well, it's been mentioned already that out of the six hundred of six hundred and seventy uh sort of representations, five hundred and twenty were opposed and we tonight, from a number of those residents, as well as we heard from the uh the applicant, that there are some really concerns about whether or not the urban growth boundary should be extended. Also, on page ninety six, there is another option that coming from that particular policy that we developed on the twenty second of March twenty twenty one. And that is withdraw the request to amend the urban growth boundary. As indicated, this is not a statutory process and is open to council to reconsider its support for the project. It may wish to do that for a com- any combination of reasons, such as the applicant's responses and responses received from referrals to council and government agencies. There has been government agencies input and they have, that particular agency has said that there's going to be a a high cost in relation to infrastructure and it's basically not within their realm at this stage to agree to the uh extension of the urban growth boundary. And any of the opposing reasons expressed in the community consultation outcomes that could involve decide that for the reasons the request to amend the urban growth boundary should be withdrawn and decide to request the minister not to proceed to amend the urban growth boundary for the specified reasons. Alderman Von Berto has clearly identified those reasons and also has followed the process in relation to uh uh following through the uh Lucy one and also, in fact, in relation to what feedback has been from state government agencies and also to what has come in relation to uh uh input from other councils. They are all part of the process by which the minister expects the council to go through those particular uh methods and in order to do that. I congratulate Alderman Berto because she has very clearly and distinct made these particular comments in relation to her motion and provided alternative motion reasons to support her recommendation for not to proceed with the urban growth boundary. I support that motion and I hope my colleagues will do so in accordance with the number of uh responses that have been received from the public at large and also in accordance with what is the process that the Minister for Planning expects to be followed as part of the process.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley, and then Alderman Warren?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um, Mr. Mayor, although this appears to be an emotive issue for some, let's be clear, this is not a complicated matter. This is only an application to adjust a line on a map. Council will be able to control any future planning application. There is really no new information since council's original original decision taken more than twelve months ago. And based on that council decision, the applicants have invested considerable time and resources into this project and have extensively engaged with the community. It is important to acknowledge that the RL US one is an information sheet and some data literally does not exist to be able to fully address the sheet. As we've already heard this evening, the same data analysis provided by the applicants uh was used by Brighton and Hobart councils last year and the minister pragmatically, and I would submit correctly, approved those UGB applications. The Planning Policy Unit has a clear position that applications applications should not be precluded just because data doesn't exist. Clearly, how the minister views the responses by the councils should be matter for him and I have every confidence he will liaise closely with state growth in assessing the application. There is no current proposed subdivision. This is just an application to amend the growth boundary. Now, if approved by the minister, applicant would work closely with state growth and council to ensure any future upgrade to the work to a proposed subdivision is acceptable to all parties. Importantly, Mr. Mayor, the applicants would have to meet all costs associated with this. Now, in regards to the survey results, let us not forget that nearly twenty five percent of all respondents were in support of the proposal. And this was after a campaign of misinformation via letterbox drops, road signs and social media that significantly and in my view disingenuously exaggerated the potential impact of the proposal. If the minister approves this application, then the council will be the controlling planning authority and can ensure community concerns are addressed at the appropriate time. Mr. Mayor, with the recommendations of the recent uh review and report into workplace culture, this council's still fresh in our minds. Council will recall the section regarding decisions of this council being constantly revisited by some in an attempt to overturn previous decisions. This motion, Mr. Mayor, is a perfect example of that sort of conduct and frankly, in my view, it is totally the wrong path for this council to head down. Moreover, this alternate motion, albeit it was mentioned at our Friday's agenda briefing, was not distributed until four twenty PM today, giving us less than three hours to consider it before tonight's council meeting. Now, although I consider myself to be a capable sort of bloke, I don't have the luxury of being a retiree and with competing work and community commitments, it is not always possible to devote the necessary time and energy to alternate motions dropped in our laps at the eleventh hour. I mean, if this is a policy making on the run.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I wish, I wish for you to ask Alderman Blomley to retract his statement in relation to my status as far as being a retiree. There is no relevance to that statement at all. I wish for an apology.
Well, well, um, yeah, I I wondered about. Well, yeah, I, I wondered about that as well. You're not the only retiree and I'm sure that he his comments did not directly implicate you in that regard.
Mr. Mayor, I request an apology from Alderman Blomley.
Well, I'm not going to go down that path at the moment. I'm not convinced that one's deserved at this point in time. Alderman Blomley, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, it was a generalized statement. However, if Alderman von Berto is offended, I do unreservedly apologize to her. I was making the point, Mr. Mayor, that we all don't have the luxury with less than three hours for a council meeting to get our heads around a very detailed motion that Alderman von Berto has delivered to us this evening, which is Alderman von Berto always delivers detailed material and I appreciate that. But it requires me, Mr. Mayor, to spend some time to, I think all of us, to give it appropriate due diligence, time to get our heads around. So from my perspective, Mr. Mayor, because it was delivered within three hours, nearly two and a half hours of tonight's meeting, in my view, this is policymaking on the run. And in my view, the residents or rate base of the city deserve better, much better when we're dealing with important issues like this. And further, the sovereign risk this type of behaviour brings to bear on council and our operations is, in my view, significant. Who in their right mind would want to deal with this council if the directors of the organisation continually flip-flop on decisions? What sort of signal would this send to those wanting to invest in our community, wanting to increase housing stock availability in our community, those wanting to generate employment opportunities in our community and those who
A point of order, Mr. Chair.
Would generate additional rates.
Alderman Blomley, hold on. Alderman James, go ahead with your point of
Yeah, look, Alderman is not keeping to the subject matter. It's a case of relevance. Could you get, refer him to the subject matter, to the motions before the chair, please?
Well, quite frankly, Alderman James, I believe he is speaking to the motion.
I knew you'd say that.
Thank you.
I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, I've used some big words, so I'll keep it simple. This is a very slippery slope and for all the reasons I've outlined, I cannot support this motion. And if it is unsuccessful tonight, I will seek to move the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to attempt to clarify the issues in plain English without use of rhetoric or emotion or acronyms for, for my benefit and for the benefit of people listening. What, what we have before us is the land use strategy, which applies to the use of land in our municipality. Now, that determines where we can build residential, where we can build agricultural, commercial, et cetera. And if you like to think of it, there's a ring around the municipality called the urban growth boundary, which delineates how far we can go with that development. Now, the land use strategy is supposed to be regularly reviewed and it's a case of looking at what are the future needs of our community? How much development do we need? Where should it go? Where is the infrastructure? What infrastructure do we need to put in place to support that development and so on? So it's really important to review that as a big picture, not to do a piecemeal, let's tweak a bit here, tweak a bit there and so on. And I believe that review is overdue. It was supposed to have happened by now. And really, the question tonight is, do we leap ahead and make a change now? Or do we say, no, we should wait for that review? Now, we have voted as a council and in some cases almost unanimously to make changes to the urban growth boundary. But it's often been just a little tiny chunk that's been in the middle of an area that's been developed. So it's been an anomaly or it's been right on the edge in just one or two blocks. But to, to do an entire subdivision outside the urban growth boundary is not an anomaly. It's something that I think needs to be taken into account as part of the overall review. Now, my understanding is that there are some three thousand vacant lots in the Clarence municipality. So we're not short of places to build. We're short of will to development, to develop perhaps and, and other issues that I can't guess at, but it's, it's not like we're short of land. We're also looking at infill, as we've seen tonight, and developing more properties on existing land. So if we were to look at Clarence as a whole and say, is there a need for more housing stock? Is there a need for a new subdivision? We need to do that as a whole municipality and it needs to go hand in hand with those conversations about is the infrastructure in place? If we do need it, where is the best place to put it? Not just say, here's a development and therefore let's do this one. So I think that we should follow the plan, which is to review the urban growth boundary as part of that wider big picture thinking about what do we need in our municipality going forward? So I think it's premature and I've been consistent in this position. I think it's, so it would be, it wouldn't be flip-flopping for me to change my mind because I'm just being consistent with the position that I've put forward in previous meetings, as has been explained to me by people with a lot more experience and years in, in this area, that the urban growth boundary should be reviewed as part of the bigger picture and we shouldn't preempt that by doing ad hoc changes in response to particular developments, unless there, those really strange anomalies where you've got one block in the middle of a residential area that needs to be rezoned. So I'm very thankful to Alderman von Berto for bringing this very well articulated motion in terms of all the legalese and all the, the correct terminology. And I hope that my explanation has brought that back to simple, plain English terms that everybody can understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Edmunds and Alderman Kennedy and then Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is an issue that people are deeply passionate about, as we've already seen in this debate. There's no doubt that engaging with residents, either on the phone, emails, visiting the site, which I've done a few times, has been really informative to get perspectives of people involved alongside the council's engagement processes, which, as I said earlier, I think are definitely improving. I've listened to the reasons why it's supported as well as those which people have been excited by. Back when, back when we first talked about this and I note the comments earlier about how we're revisiting this topic again, I support it largely because Tasmania is in the grip of a housing crisis. Unfortunately, and this is not directed at anyone, but unfortunately, this crisis isn't so real for many elected representatives or policy decision makers who've paid off their home or homes or are well on the way to doing so. The housing crisis is real for everyone else, however, especially young people and families, people on fixed or smaller incomes. And I'm not seeing enough action from the levels of government above us to address that. I do understand the arguments that sought after blocks on this site are not necessarily what will be on the menu for first home buyers. But I guess that's the point. You can't run an argument that the hill will be littered with townhouses while also arguing their prestige blocks. No matter what type of housing stock may come online, if this goes through all the relevant hoops that's to come, it would provide relief in a marketplace that's on fire and squeezing people, especially the young and the poor at the bottom end and leaving them literally nowhere to go. If the urban growth boundary, and I know we touched on this in a lot, Brian Green was the planning minister when that was last review, I mean, we talk about overdue, it's long overdue and we're not seeing any will to do it. So that's why these ad hoc, as the Mayor of Glenorkie referenced, ad hoc things are coming because literally that is the process that the government has in place to deal with it. But if the urban growth boundary is extended, I'm certainly committed to ensuring that the structure plan, subdivision, every other step of the process ensures that it respects this area and is fit for purpose. Now, anyone on the hill at Lord of Vale watching now who doesn't believe that statement doesn't need to look far, impact just face towards the airport and look a few Ks to see what, that when developers have sought to, you know, potentially overcrowd or use illogical traffic plans or overburden local infrastructure, that we, the collective, have said, no, thanks. In fact, we've said it multiple times when we've had things that don't fit the bill. So I've said it to plenty of people I've talked to throughout the process. If there's any Mickey being taken if the U G B gets passed, it's not going to cut the mustard with me and I know from my dealings with the eleven of you, it won't cut the mustard with you. But I guess all of this is premature without a decision on the U G B with, which everyone has followed the appropriate processes. Indeed, the conclusion of the report talks about the fact that the Minister for Planning asked for this information. We've collated it, including the community consultation, and now we are giving him every tool he needs to make the decision. After all the work that's been done by everyone involved, I'm not prepared to cut the legs off this proposal when it's in front of us with an officer's recommendation for approval and the final decision is made by the minister. Whatever decision the minister makes, I look forward to hearing their reasons and how they intend to tackle the housing crisis.
Thanks, Alderman Edmunds. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I can only echo Alderman Edmunds' comments there. This has indeed been an emotive issue and I'd just like to say that in my short time on this council, this is the first time that I've actually been targeted and personally attacked on an issue. Why? I don't know. It's been quite extraordinary, but it's actually been very well organised. Very disappointing to say the least. I could go on and on and on, but I won't. I have listened. I've met with many, both for and against. I've offered to meet with many that refused to meet with me. I've listened. I have family. I have friends that live Maze Point Road, Bayview, all around that area. But as Alderman Blomley mentioned before, ultimately, the decision comes back to the minister. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr. And can I thank Alderman Warren for her very cogent explanation of the urban growth boundary and, and its potential and overdue consideration. Look, like, like others, I have wrestled with this one, but for me, it fundamentally comes down to not shoving this off on to the minister. I think we abrogate our responsibility to consider what's come to us if we just say, well, we'll just give it to the minister to decide. We went out for consultation on this and like many of you, I have talked to a number of people, read a number of emails, been to the site. And I, in all honesty, cannot support the original recommendation. I have to support Alderman von Berto's refusal because taking all of that information into account, I cannot recommend that this goes to the minister. And I don't think, as Alderman, we should be considering just sending it off to somebody else. We need to think about our view and take our community's views into account.
Thank you. Do you have other speakers? Alderman Newington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, bottom line with this one is that it's just one step in a long process, which we have started already. And the point that Alderman Blomley made about the, you know, sovereign risk stuff, that, that is a very, very major issue that we need to think carefully about in this space. And we've had a couple of things happen in the last eighteen months to two years where we have sent out a bit of a mixed message to some people out in the community about our position on this sort of stuff. Regardless of where we stand on this sort of thing, we've got to get back to being consistent in the way that we approach. And if we're going to actually vote to make a decision, one way to allow someone to go and do some work to try and progress a process, which is what's in place, which is how we've been asked to do it in relation to the Planning Commission at the moment and the minister's role in in that, I would be very disappointed if we turned around and actually said, no, we're not going to do it. And I mean, while Alderman Chong might say that it's up to us to decide now, well, it, it, it really isn't because, you know, it's got to go. The process has started. We still have a, we still have the opportunity to say no to it at some point in the future if we come up with something that doesn't, doesn't fit the bill. Now, you know, I mean, the, the issue that Alderman Edmunds raised about housing affordability, I mean, and, and housing stock, and I mean, that, that's really the only lever that we can pull that we have direct control over. And while it might, some might say that there's plenty of other properties, plenty of other blocks out there ready to development. You know, it, it's a numbers game and, and the competition between developers in relation to getting as much stock as possible going, people, you know, the more we have available, the more likely people are to develop because they don't want to get left out. Or there's more chance of things happening. And I just would like to think that, you know, that's part of the process. And I mean, the, the bottom line is, the urban growth boundary amendments is all over the place. And this is the one way, one tool we have at our disposal to actually say to the minister and the government and the Planning Commission, come on, get on with it. Now, you know, like I said, we're not actually saying that we are proving anything. And I mean, you know, the word subdivision's been thrown around here and I mean, you know, I wouldn't call it a subdivision, you know, I'd say three or four hundred blocks, you might call that. But this is, you know, an expansion of an existing, you know, urban area, which is very popular and a lot of people would love to live there. And those that are against it, which is their right, you know, I think, you know, it is a little bit selfish. Some people say, no, it should stay the same. We don't want anyone else there. And I don't agree with that. And the other side of it, the issues that are already been raised by the people against this proposal, they're still going to be there regardless of whether this proposal goes ahead. But if it goes ahead, in my mind, it gives us the, the government, the state government and us as a council greater opportunity to have the resources available to deal with some of the traffic issues and deal with some of the school issues, which are outside our control, with the traffic issues and some of the local infrastructure, which, which, which is an important part of, of the business that we're in, providing for the community. But, you know, when it comes to the survey, I mean, that's an interesting one. And it's most disappointing to hear what's happened to Alderman Kennedy in relation to that. I mean, people are entitled to their views, but they're not entitled to go out and do some of the things that, that she's mentioned here. I mean, bottom line is, five hundred people were against it out of fifty-five thousand. So to suggest that there's overwhelming community objection to this is not the case in my mind. I mean, the people that were interested have obviously been involved and put their two bobs in, which is, which is important and it's their right. But they're not the only ones that have a say in it. The people, the wider community has a say and also people, not necessarily people now, but people into the future. And that's what we should be basing our decisions on. What's right for the, for the whole community and what's right for the whole community in the next ten or fifteen years. And this is a very important decision that will still take another three or four years to come to fruition if it gets to that point. We can control what goes on. We can deal with the issues that might be being raised up to now. But, you know, I encourage our colleagues, you know, most importantly, to give the right message to people out there that are trying to increase the number of people that want to live in our wonderful city and not stop this halfway through. I just, I would hate to see that happen. And I think, you know, sending a message to the state government and the world to actually, come on, get on with this, deal with it, give us the opportunity, give, give the developers the opportunity to deal with the issues, further consult with the community, come back to us with some plans on how they hope to sort of create the best possible outcome for the most people. And I would certainly recommend that, that we refuse this motion here by Alderman von Berto. And I would certainly be supporting the officer's recommendation as foreshadowed by Alderman Blomley.
Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am retired, but that doesn't mean I'm not busy. And even if I wasn't busy, I can certainly assure you that two and a half hours ahead of this meeting is totally insufficient time for me to test the many assertions and assumptions that are in this alternative motion. The fact is that this motion was substantially drafted, as I understand it, on Friday to a point where Alderman James was quite happy with it. Why it's taken so long to get to the rest of us, I don't know. If you are so confident that the minister's requirements haven't been met, and then you need not be concerned because clearly if you are correct in your assertions and your assumptions, then the minister isn't going to approve this anyway, so it's dead in the water. As for Glenorkie, well, they have no suitable land for further development. Their only way of growing themselves and their rate base is to continue with inner residential style, high active development, which of course is the reason they want the urban railway. As for the idea that somehow or other, we've made a decision one day and that we somehow, and that we're forced thereby to not overturn that, 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 I'm sorry, that just doesn't wash. All of us have had check and changes. New material comes to hand, we might consider something different. The point with this and which I have to be persuaded is that if I am to change my mind and support this motion, then I need to explain what's new and why I should change my mind. To date, that hasn't happened. The problem we have is affordable land. Affordable housing depends on affordable land. And although we have many of the opportunities within the urban growth boundary, the fact that the land prices are charging the way they are is because of land banking, which means that the supply is being artificially constrained, which is driving up the prices. Now, we've talked about many times, and this issue included, issues about how do we punish people for land banking to increase the supply? The answer is that no one has shown any inclination or willingness to do so, except when someone comes up and wants to increase the supply, to put the pressure on the land prices. except when someone comes up and wants to increase the supply, to put the pressure on the land prices. We are met with this sort of bureaucratic obfuscation. Now, my last point is that I am also concerned that Aldermen are referencing reports that we have received, we have only briefly discussed, and that are actually still covered by confidence, by confidential cover, in fact, legal privilege. So I'm just a bit concerned that in order to prosecute a point, this report is being raised in this context, and I might say, totally unnecessary. At this stage, Mr Mayor, I'm yet to be convinced that our decision, our previous decision, should not stand.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, a bit like Alderman Mulder there, I've been through this. I went and had a look at the sites again from different angles. I was in Lauderdale, three hours there. No one spoke to me about this topic whatsoever, even though I was in the open, which did surprise me. It's funny, like Alderman Kendy said, you know, they're saying, oh, vote this way or you won't get any votes next election. Well, if that's the way you want my vote, you certainly won't get it that way. So I understand, you know, that's been proposed on a lot of Aldermen. Mayor, it was interesting that 163 people in the summary needed more information, consultation and planning. So I'm a bit surprised at that number because I thought that number was fairly high. Now, the representations I've had in the last two days say, how many people voted this way? How many voted that way? And that have your say thing. But people haven't really said to me, yeah, this is a reason why you should oppose it. Now, like Alderman Newington said, it's a long way to go yet. Geez, it's a long way to go. You know, it's not going to happen overnight. Now, I'm talking about social housing here, but I've been able to just guide people on where to go to get social housing, and over the time, they've got it. And if you've seen the look on the face of a person that actually has got a home, even though it's social housing in this case, it's so great. And Alderman Edmund's alluded to it too, that, you know, this is a great area. It is a fantastic area, I know. I reckon it's got some of the best views in Hobart in this area, you know, especially in Clarence, a real icon. So Mayor, I will support Alderman Blomley's alternative motion if this is lost.
Thank you. And Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Your Worship. Spoiler alert, I intend to vote in a consistent fashion tonight, as I have done on this process all the way through. We're considering a matter that I would suggest is being handled in basically a bureaucratic workaround process, something that evolved, I think, to deal with small scale anomalies and pretty simple and straightforward ones. Now, under this established process, all southern councils not only have to be consulted, but they're expected to give consent or at the very least not put any opposition. It's meant to be a Voltron of southern councils backing any change to the new GP. That is meant to be the buffer around giving the minister comfort that, in this instance, this change done in that process is appropriate. And on that basis alone, the GCC submission kills it. Them's the rules, it kills it. So I'd note that. And I also note that I do consider the area and the size of this change to be of scale and complexity. And there were some comments around the alternate, and I would say that this is not a dog in the manger alternate motion in any case. It is a motion that is consistent with facts and processes. What did I get? Two and three quarter hours before the meeting started of notice? And in fact, as I look at the clock, it's ticked well over four hours since I received this motion. And boy, howdy, you look at the notice and time we've had in this session of council. Sometimes you get it as the motion's being about to be moved. But in most cases, I was often getting alternates as I stepped into the chambers at about three minutes before a meeting. So I just don't buy the not enough time, Your Honour, argument. There's quite a bit to reflect on, and I think I really want to reflect on the other two that have come before us in council in this time using this process, Atkins Street and indeed the Pass Road amendment. They were voted 11-1. They were simple. They were of small scale. They lined up. We were able to make a cogent case and we were able to get support of the surrounding councils. And our word mattered when we submitted it forward. And they were, you know, there is a good story to tell around there. And that is the sovereign risk story, because if we're doing those ones and then trying to use the same thing for something of this scale, that affects the currency of our representation to higher levels of government. And if there is another Atkins Street or another Pass Road that comes before us, worthy as it might be, it's now, I suspect, going to have a harder time when we try to advocate for it at a higher level. Now, you know, there has been the argument of land supply. It's a real issue. And I think we're all in agreement that maybe it'll be tacked on to this motion or any other motion that we request a major review of the urban growth boundary. We should probably put it on every motion we pass. And I think we support that. I've got to wonder with some of the comments here. They do bode quite well for the Skylands development if we're going to be consistent with arguments. If you look through the report, what do you see? You see how it doesn't meet the R S L U one? And then you see those submissions from people like the Depset Kem Evans. Now, Atkins Street and Pass Road didn't have those hurdles. And again, this just is going to devalue the currency of our representation when other little processes come before us. Again, your Atkins Street or your Pass Roads. So, I mean, I think, what have I got? I've got a couple of minutes left. I guess a question through you, Mayor, to Mr Lovell. Mr Lovell, can you explain the difference in process that the Skylands process is going through versus the process that this matter has come before us?
Look, I'm going to rule that out of order. It takes us into another project totally, Alderman Walker. I think that we need to focus on this issue at hand rather than try and deal with a process that we haven't even got our teeth into yet and it hasn't come to council in any significant way yet.
Well, is that your acknowledgement, Your Worship, that there is a time-honored, regular and established process for assessing things against the changes to the urban growth boundary?
Look, I think that the points you made in relation to previous changes to the urban growth boundary are precedents that you quite validly draw on, but I think it's rather speculative to go into a project which hasn't got that far yet.
It being assessed under a different process?
No, I'm saying that the Skylands project is not even as close as this yet in terms of any form proposal or we're still going through that process of consultation.
Okay. Look, I'd just say to my colleagues, you know, 11-1 with those other ones. This isn't a council that is trying to lock up every piece of land. There is harm in our ability to negotiate things going forward by trying to advocate for this one, given all the evidence writ large throughout our papers. It's not too light with all that information to hand to change your mind. It just isn't.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Right, a reply, Alderman Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to comment on a number of matters that have been covered by various Aldermen. I'd like to note that I have been consistent throughout this matter since it was first brought to us on the 9th of February 2021. I moved the officer's recommendation, and it was seconded by Alderman James. That recommendation had a 30-page report attached to it. It was a very detailed report and had been very carefully considered in a very strategic way by the officers. However, council, the majority of the Aldermen, decided to not support the officer's recommendation and supported a three paragraph motion, alternative motion, from Alderman Newington. On the 1st of March, I attempted to get that decision rescinded, so that we could have public consultation before such a recommendation or request went to the minister. That was not supported by the majority of the Aldermen. On the 22nd of March 2021, I brought before council a policy in relation to, in general and in the future, that where we are requesting of the minister a change to the Southern Regional Land Use Strategy, that prior to any such request, we go out to public consultation. That motion was successful, with seven Aldermen voting for it and five against. And the public are able to see who voted for and against. Because this council supposedly has a strong commitment to public consultation, and it has then community engagement policy, and this particular policy extended that aspect of public consultation. In relation to this particular matter...
Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. I'm sorry, your time is up. So the motion before the Chair is that council withdraw its request to amend the urban growth boundary. All those in favour? Acting General Manager, can you let me know when that vote's recorded, please?
It's recorded, Mayor.
Thank you. Could you lower the hands?
On to it, Mayor.
And all those against the motion, please raise their hand.
And Wendy.
So the motion has been lost, Alderman Blomley. What was the numbers, Mr Mayor, please?
Seven, five.
Thank you.
The who voted which way will be recorded in the minutes.
Yes, I understand. I just don't know because you said, I didn't know that.
Seven, five, Alderman James.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Blomley?
Mr Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Do I have a second, please? Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Over 12 months ago, this council endorsed a course of action. And based on that council decision, the applicants have invested considerable time and resources into this project and have extensively engaged with the community. And as is clearly outlined in the officer's recommendation, the applicant has provided the additional information sought by the minister, and this satisfies the relevant requirements of RL US1. And the consultation process that we decided to embark on at a 20 December 2021 meeting does not raise any new matters that outweigh the merits of the proposal. Mr Mayor, it is on that basis and the other points I previously raised that I am pleased to move the officer's recommendation and now seek the support of colleagues.
Alderman Newington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, I think we've all sort of had our two bobs worth up to now. But I mean, the one issue I just wanted to raise at the end, last bit there, from a community wellbeing and sport and rec and that sort of perspective, is that this gives a great opportunity to at least the community and the developers to consider how that land could be incorporated into the tracks and trail side of things and basically formalize the public open space component to add significantly to the local community. And I think that's one of the reasons why I was supportive of going down this path. And I think, you know, I mean, the bottom line is, it's a beautiful area. I've spent 15 years of my life living down there. And having a few more people live down there to enjoy that quality lifestyle is something that I can understand why people would want to do that. So I encourage the rest of us to move on and let it take its course, which lies, as I've said before, is a long way out yet. At least, we can get some clarity for everyone involved and move on and see what happens.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, it's going to be very interesting once the, if this motion is carried for the minister, to look at the information that has been submitted. And not only will he be doing that, but he'll be looking at what other information was actually provided for him to be convinced that there needs to be some changes to the urban growth boundary. And in this particular case, as we know, all other southern councils were contacted, and not all of those councils agreed with the proposal. And that's one of the planks that needs to be considered by the minister at that appropriate time. Also, it was referred to the relevant state service agencies, and they have concerns in relation to infrastructure and how, in fact, this particular development, if it goes ahead. And they will be advising the minister in relation to that. The other factor of the matter is that council made a decision on the 22nd of March 2021. That is prior, and prior to that, council made a decision to sort of take this application forward. So we had a decision after that event, and that basically changed the whole process by which we needed to go through a particular process to amend the urban growth boundary. And we adopted a policy, a policy that was, in best practice, undertakes broad public consultation before determining whether or not to support a particular request. Now, the minister is going to obviously look at those proposals and see that there was 77% of the people in that particular area, and we don't cover the whole of the city of Clarence for this. We need to consider the particular area of where this particular development is to occur. And so the minister will obviously look at the particular response from the public and make a decision in accordance with that on the recommendation of the department that would advise him on this. So look, even though this motion, if it does get up, it's not going to be very, I believe, not very receptive in basis of being received by the minister as a very good, as a process by which we need to go ahead with this. I moved the motion for Atkins Street a few years ago, and because of the very nature of that was a very straightforward process, and it got up. And that's one of the sort of merits of my contribution to this particular urban growth boundary exercise that's occurred. In this particular case, it is not really a project which I believe the minister will support, and we can go ahead and approve it and so on and so forth. But at the end of the day, the key planks of which the minister will make a decision will be on the vice of the planning unit within the TPC, on the response from those government agencies, and also from the other councils which have not fully supported a change to the urban growth boundary with respect to the Richardson's Road. I will not support this officer's recommendation because it's contrary to the officers when they put forward it to council back in February, and also too, since then, we've had a decision of the 22nd of March, which has broadened the whole question of a policy that council has made in relation to public consultation as a matter of policy and best practice. And we have not taken on board the people's wishes or concerns, and therefore I don't believe the minister will support this application.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, my reasons for not supporting this motion have been made very clear in my alternative motion. However, I would like to make one last comment. And it is that, as noted in this...
And it is that, as noted in this council meeting's officer report at page 95, the request to amend the urban growth boundary is a non-statutory application. Council may therefore choose to review how it deals with the matter, having regard to the consultation outcomes. And I assume that where the words are consultation outcomes, it's referring to the consultation or the referral to the other councils and to the various government agencies, authorities and bodies. And I will refer, Alderman, to the 20th of September 2021 item on this matter. Where option three was chosen by the majority of the Aldermen. And that option was referred to as the referral exhibition and report option. And what I'd like to say in conclusion is that I believe there is very strong and varied evidence that council should now withdraw its support for the current amendment at 52 Richardson's Road, Sanford.
Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berta. Alderman Mulder. If you're trying to speak, you're muted, Alderman Mulder.
Yes, Mr Mayor, as usual, I apologize. I was both deaf and blind. Mr Mayor, this is this particular proposal is similar to Pass Road and to the Atkin Joseph Street things in that it abuts the urban growth boundary. It is connected to many of the services that it will use. And if and as such, apart from its scale, and I don't like the small the little size of the blocks, and I've made that very clear throughout the thing, but that is seriously out of my control. And I do sympathize with that. And I do think that if we were to allow this urban growth boundary to grow, then we would might be able to get something other than handkerchief sized lots. I'm just so concerned that, well, I'm bemused, might I say, that if everyone is so confident of the minister rejecting it, then so be it. But I think we have a responsibility here to look at the supply of land in our thing and say that although there are sufficient blocks, we are confronted with a housing crisis and a shortage of affordable land because those available blocks are just not being supplied to the market. The only way we're going to do that is to increase the supply, which which will have an effect on reducing the cost. The terms of the infrastructure, these are things to be still sorted out. But I'd be very surprised if the majority of future residents were to be using the Bayswater Road, Bayview Drive access and egress to this particular development, when Richardson's Road is such an obvious, straightforward and uncomplicated means of getting to the South Arm Highway. If you talk about my pet device, about drainage, these were issues that I have raised with the developers when they presented to us some many, many months ago now. And I'm confident that they have got the drainage capacity to deal with these with the drainage. The other issue is the is that keeps getting raised is, oh, no, we can't build houses, any more houses in this area because the school lacks capacity. Because the school can't do it. So in other words, people can't live in a house because their children won't have a school to go to? What sort of logic is that? Isn't it our responsibility to if people to house people primarily and then to provide the schools? And there are many schools in that area which are very underutilized. And, you know, we don't have to make the assumption that they're going to. In fact, a similar proposal in a nearby area is actually a report from the Education Department saying that three and a half thousand additional dwelling units won't require additional schooling because they're coming on to the market, et cetera. So I really think that all the issues about the infrastructure, and I think the final point is that is that this is a question of the urban growth boundary. We all know that the time will come when that urban growth boundary will need to expand. And to think that this area will never be encapsulated by an urban growth boundary, I think, is fanciful. And it's just a question of if not now, then it will be delayed. So, you know, I don't see any issues with moving ahead with this one now. And if the government decides, as the others have done, then you've won by default. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Blomley. Alderman Walker. You're muted.
I've pretty much used all my speaking time and a bit last last go, so I've got a bit more to say, but I won't take it all up this time. Yep, it was a seven, five, seven to five majority, and that is the majority. It ain't 11-1, and 11-1 was Atkin Street and 11-1 was Pass Road. But I do note that. I didn't make a comment on the submissions we received. And I, you know, as usual, you know, I note the quantity, but you know, I'm more interested in the quality of the submissions. And I've got to say, lot and layout was occasionally raised as a concern, but I don't know that I'd say it was the concern. There was a variety of cogent concerns, right? Also should mention that we previously considered this in September. And there was a really straightforward option there. And that was option four, not to progress. That was to receive the response provided by JMG and to resolve that the response does not satisfy the RL US1 requirements and not respond to the minister. And I think that was the right response then. And it's the right response now. And I acknowledge Alderman James as probably being the only other one that was of the same view. Here's what I'm going to do, because it isn't too late to change your mind. This is serious. It has ramifications. We've talked about the others. We've talked about the sovereign risk has been raised. And I talk about the currency devaluation of a submission from Clarence, when this one is lodged alongside the likes of Atkin Street, alongside the likes of Pass Road. So I foreshadow, should this not be successful, that I'll move a motion which is pretty much there for all to see on page 96. I'll blank out a word here or there. And, you know, I'll give you the reasonings as well. And should that event happen to occur, well, then you can put your umbrage on me for the short amount of notice versus what was unfairly put towards Alderman Von Berta.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley. Write a reply.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'd like to thank colleagues for their contributions this evening. I'd also like to thank the many members of our community who have taken the time to contact all of us, those for and those against the issue this evening. I'm sure we'd all agree that there has been extensive community consultation on this matter. And it's pleasing to see that people have taken the option to voice to voice their views. It's not always easy what we do. We've been elected to make decisions that we believe in the best interest of our residents and taxpayers. And it's for that reason, Mr Mayor, that I was happy to move the officer's recommendation this evening. And I'll seek the support of colleagues to support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. So the officer's recommendation is before us to proceed with providing the minister all the information and maintaining our support for the proposal to amend the urban growth boundary. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Acting GM, please let me know when you've got. Alderman Mulder, are you voting on this? Sorry? Okay. Let me know when you've recorded the vote, please.
We've recorded the vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. There's seven in favour. All those against, please vote by raising your hand. There's five against, so the motion is carried. Thank you, Alderman. Moving on to item 7.4.3, that we approve the draft active lifestyle strategy for community consultation purposes. But I've been moving a second, please. Thank you, Alderman Newington, moved it. Second, Alderman Walker. Alderman Newington, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. It's with great pleasure that I moved this motion to move to the next stage of our active lifestyle strategy. And I want to point that in particular, where we started in this space, which was looking at sport and recreation, which has traditionally been how council looks at lots of these things in relation to the organized sports side of things and the traditional sports like cricket and football and and other soccer and those sort of things, which are an important part of active lifestyles, don't get me wrong. But the task that we took on in relation to come up with this strategy was really more about looking at how, as a council, we can play a bigger role in the sorts of physical activity and exercise, leisure and recreation activities that we can do that are becoming more popular in recent years. And there's been a real move away from, not a move away, but I mean, an increasing popularity in unorganized or or non-organized sport where people are, you know, doing activities that don't require you to be part of a of a club. And also too, you know, the changes that we've seen in other cities and other areas where, you know, our parks and playgrounds have become more than just a couple of picnic tables and a barbecue. And we've incorporated, you know, exercises and other recreational activities for the whole community to to get involved. And I also want to point out the, you know, the recent motion that Alderman Edmonds put up in relation to to a real commitment from from us as a group of Aldermen and from us as a council to move really towards the all abilities and all ages concept of creating spaces where people can get that and be fit and active and also be socially engaged as a community. And I sort of, you know, and I was really pleased to see that, you know, we're all on the same page with that one. And that's something that we'd been talking about for a long time as part of our discussions leading up to that motion by Alderman Edmonds. But, you know, to bring it out in the public sphere like that and really highlight the need to do that was was more than welcome. But, you know, this is all about, you know, looking at how we can do things a lot better in this space in relation to having, you know, a more structured and a more transparent funding process in relation to what are the projects that we that we consider as a council to to fund. And I mean, you know, you know, there's that it's probably the most discretionary discretionary area of council in relation to which playgrounds do we do we look at and which which sports grounds get upgraded and in which, you know, what are those things? And we really need to be, you know, a little bit more transparent with that. But also to make it easier for the community to come to us with ideas and what they think they'd like to see happen. And that's a big part of what this strategy is all about, you know, having minimum design standards in relation to, you know, different, you know, the size of change rooms, you know, making sure we cater for, you know, male and female participation and make sure that we we, you know, we're not having to retrofit things as we go. You know, and master planning and encouraging multi-use and multipurpose, we've really got to get away from, you know, one club, one, one sport, one team facilities and trying to encourage, you know, a master plan where we can have hubs, where we have a whole range of activities, where we can share resources in terms of change rooms and, you know, canteens and meeting rooms and all those sorts of things so that we get the best bang for the buck for the community. But the other side of it too, was to really look at how do we activate these spaces, you know, from the coastal trails to our, you know, to our mountain bike park, to our sports grounds, and even our playgrounds? Well, how do we get more people involved in using those areas and and actually encourage providers to come in? I mean, it's no lot no different than what we do with with sports grounds at the moment. We're sporting clubs go and activate, do sports grounds. You know, we've got to look at innovative ways to do that. And some of the things that are happening, so for example, in the Mountain Bike Park, where there's commercial operators going there, running tours and introductory sessions for people. And, you know, I mean, even, you know, down the track, looking at hire businesses for stand up paddleboards or canoes or kayaks or even scooters and bikes on the coastal trail. I mean, you know, the opportunities to encourage and have policies in place to deal with all those changes and an evolution of how we do things, I think, is a really important part of what we've tried to outline in this in this strategy. But, I mean, in summary, I mean, you know, I'm certainly looking forward to the community feedback on this one. You know, when we presented this at council the last time, it was it was great to get the feedback from my colleagues in relation to their support to go down this path. And I think we'd all acknowledge that having a more active community and the impact that has on health and wellbeing is something that, you know, is a really major part of what we do. And if we can do our bit to create a situation where, you know, we can help chronic disease, we can help mental health, we can help that increase that social connectivity, you know, we could all walk away with a, you know, feeling pretty pleased with the job that we've done. And like I said, I look forward to seeing the the community feedback and then, you know, seeing what we can come up with in the next few years as a result of the the strategies and policies and frameworks that are going to come out of this strategy.
Alderman Walker, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, there are a range of initiatives and drivers to engage with an active lifestyle. And, you know, I think we have come a fair way with the playgrounds, certainly from when I started on this council and all of my contemporaries would get in their car with a picnic and get the hell out of this municipality and get down to Kingborough or Sandy Bay. People are now heading towards Belried Beach Playground. People are now heading towards Simmons. So that's an example of facilitating active lifestyles. I think a state of the art dog park, given given a high amount of dogs would be another example. But now to this matter entirely, which is the strategy and it isn't the final thing we're signing off. We're signing off and going out to community consultation. But I'm very happy to have my name going down for all time as the second of this motion. Because the thing about this is this is what a strategy should be. This is a clear document. This is a concise document. This document uses plain language. This document is pragmatic and it puts that over ideology. And that's what I want to see in strategies. And that is why it is getting my enthusiastic endorsement. And I'm seeking a 12-0 outcome on this in support.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just have one point that I'd like Alderman Newington to address in his right to reply. And that is, is there a place anywhere in this policy where we could perhaps refer to incidental exercise and the importance of that? And there's a lot of research coming out that demonstrates the importance of incidental exercise, walking to bus stops, walking to shops and so on, that that people who who are never going to engage in, you know, the those weight training or, you know, aged people exercise torture machines. So the other sorts of exercise that normal people do, we know that cities that have strong public transport networks have much fitter people and people who do a greater proportion of exercise. So is there room in this policy to add something that addresses incidental exercise, please?
Alderman Pearce.
Is Alderman Warren finished? Are you finished, Alderman Warren?
I had so I thought that her question was posed for Alderman Newington addressing his write a reply.
Mayor, I do like this and I do support it. I think I'll raise something now that Alderman Newington told us in his initial speech that the funding for this, we've got to have funding for it. And ask people, what would you like to see in 10 years' time? And I think anything we do, we've got to get certain sports grounds, sports facilities now with specifically increased participation of females up to scratch. And it's not going to come overnight. It's going to take a while. But if we don't budget for sufficiently every year, we're not going to be able to do half these things in a few years. One of the things I also like too, is providing barbecues and picnic areas and places in Glinda's Farm are crying out for that. We've got a great park. We just need that little bit extra. I'm sure there's a lot of parks like it, that a barbecue area would just top it off nicely. I mean, it's exciting. I'm going to really look forward to getting the response back and hopefully take it from there.
Thanks, Alderman Pearce. Other speakers? Alderman James? Alderman Chong, Deputy Mayor, could you take my chair for a minute, please?
Certainly can. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Alderman James.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm I was I shall support this, of course, because it's it's moving forward and it's in the spirit of the community and and so on. It's just one thing that I really would like to make sure that on page 132, report in detail 2.1, it's been developed in consultation with the Council Sport and Recreation Advisory Committee. The sooner this comes out of recess, the better. At the moment, it hasn't got the membership and therefore it's obviously would play a very important role important role in consulting with council and in particular, moving forward the, this lifestyle strategy. So I believe it's important that we get that sorted out because at the moment, we don't have the membership, we don't have the community input, which is so important to any of these advisory committees. And hopefully that will be brought to the fore and so on. The other thing I'd like to, the point I'd like to make is that we seem to be developing a lot of master plans and strategies and we can go out to community consultation, which I've always been a believer in and right through the years on this council, I've always listened to communities and what they want and how they see their area developing and so on. But at the same time, I think we need to be able to get to the workshop and try to put some legs on this particular strategy. And even though it's sort of 10 years out, 2022 to 2032, I'm just hoping that with a new council and presumably we'll have some new faces on council, that the consultation outcomes that will be probably decided in this term of council will in fact be able to be carried forward and we can get some results during the early stages of 2022 to 2023 and thereabouts. So look, I will support this, that we, A, get Sport and Recreation Committee back on track and it's a shame that it's not operative at the moment, and B, that we have community consultation and we act on those particular comments and drive this forward for the future, not only for this council, but hopefully for the betterment of the new council post October 2022.
Thank you, Alderman James. Do we have any other speakers, please? Right of reply, Alderman Ewington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for their support for moving forward on this, you know, the community consultation on this. I mean, I think, you know, it's quite clear that we all want to see, you know, greater opportunities for the community to get out there and be physically active and engaged and doing a lot more. And I'd just like to address the question that Alderman Warren raised. I mean, look, the incidental exercise is a huge part of this strategy, you know, I mean, you know, having, you know, and that's been one of the problems that we have had too much of a focus on organised sport and invested, you know, to be honest, too much in that space, you know, whether it be cricket pitches or football grounds and organised sport and not catered enough for what we do for the general community. I mean, things like, you know, we've seen the increase in the number of people, you know, out doing open water swimming down the beach. And yet, you know, one of the things we've set in the strategy is to have, you know, change rooms and showers on the beach so that someone who wants to get into open water swimming can go down and have a swim, you know, without any equipment, without organising any sport and do something that, you know, not have to pay to go to a pool and be able to, you know, go and do, they probably need a wet suit, but, you know, especially in winter, but they can go and do their own thing without needing to be in organised sport. So I can guarantee to you, Alderman Warren, that is a huge part of what we want to do. And, you know, certainly using the tracks and trails and those sort of things. And then even the parks and playgrounds, having exercise equipment in there, that is, you know, and I look forward to what we can do with the seniors' exercise park over at Lindisfarne, having those sorts of, that sort of infrastructure and make it easy and simple for people to come in and do their own exercise, you know, in spaces that is outdoors, you know, is comfortable, is, you know, and people are, you know, we're social animals, we like doing things, you know, as groups. And I think having, you know, a real focus on that space is a huge part of what we want to do. And I mean, I'm just getting on the playground thing, if you look at, you know, at the moment we do great playgrounds for the toddlers, but not much for the older, you know, the teenagers and certainly for the seniors. And that's a big part of what we want to do. I agree with Alderman James, having the committee, I mean, it was interesting, we haven't had a committee up until the last couple of years and yet we were making these decisions without any real community consultation as a committee. So it's great to see that we actually realised that that's such an important part of us helping to make decisions based on what the community feels, you know, and being transparent about this, I think is a big part of what we're trying to do. So, you know, I encourage that as well. Whether four is enough, I don't know, maybe more. I mean, I think that's one thing that we need to consider moving forward and looking at where those groups, where those individuals come from, to make sure we've got a wide range of people. Like you've asked Alderman Warren in relation to the people that want incidental activity, having people specifically that have got an interest in that space would be really worthwhile. And lastly, I just want to raise the last thing that Alderman Piers said there. I mean, you know, we've got a budget coming up soon and I certainly agree that the funding and resourcing of this space is something that we all need to consider in relation not only to the internal staffing and resourcing, but also the money that we look as being part of our ongoing capital works project. Because it's great, it's going to be great to have a strategy, but if we don't actually fund it and resource it and, you know, sell it to the community and explain how big it, how much we value it, and I think the community would welcome seeing, you know, a huge, you know, a larger spend and a larger investment in this space moving forward, so.
Thank you, Alderman Ewington. So the motion is that we approve for public consultation the Active Lifestyle Strategy. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That's carried unanimously, thank you very much. Which takes us to motions on notice, no matters dealing with a notice except for answers to questions raised at the last council meeting, which we take as read. And so questions without notice, can I start with Alderman Chong?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have two questions this evening. The first one, I refer to the question I asked at our last council meeting regarding councils' intention to enter into an exclusive 10-year lease for the Hobart Bottle Aero Club for the 40 acres of public land outside Richmond known as Kellyfield and asked the following: Can the general manager or the acting general manager confirm that the resident has submitted an objection to the lease has in fact been written to by council as outlining the response printed in our agenda papers? And if so, in what form was his correspondence and when was it sent to the resident?
General Manager, Acting General Manager.
Thank you for the question, Alderman Blomley. Unfortunately, I can't give you that answer directly this evening, but I do thank you for the question and I'll take that on notice if that's okay.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, my second question is, I refer to the advertisement in Saturday's Moocary calling for expressions of interest from sporting organisations to use Clarence Sporting Infrastructure over winter and ask if the 40 acres of Kellyfield is considered to be part of council's public sporting infrastructure and therefore part of this EOI process? And if not, why not?
Acting General Manager.
Thank you for the question, Alderman Blomley. I believe that the advertisement is in relation to responding to section 178 of the Local Government Act, which would include Kellyfield as being a leased property of council. I have asked for additional information in relation to that and I'll provide that in due course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Edmonds.
Thanks very much. First question is about Blossom Crescent Park. Do we have an update on where that's, how that's progressing in terms of being delivered in Cambridge?
Mr. Graham, are you able to help now or would you prefer to provide a report in the weekly briefing report?
I can give a brief through, Mr. Mayor, I can give you a brief update. The contract has been awarded to the tenderer, which was adopted at a council meeting last year. We are trying to get the final bit of information from the tenderer to form the contract and we have advised him of what construction date it tends to start on. Once I get all that information, I'll be in a position to advise Alderman through a briefing report.
Thanks very much. Second question, it's a pretty late breaking one. There's a bit of media this evening about the government looking to fund AFL stadium over on, near the centre half. I just wondered, have we been consulted as all as the owners of Belraye about their plans there?
I've received a heads up, which is embargoed. All I can say at this point in time is that the future of Blundstone Arena has put forward to us and briefed us to be part of Stadium Tasmania is still an intention to go ahead. There'll be more details on that and that's pretty much all the information I've got, Alderman Edmonds, at this stage. Was there any aspect that I missed?
No, no, I assume that you've got a press release they're putting out tomorrow morning about it, so that's fine.
I have asked Mr. Capas to contact the Premier's Office to ensure that we're not blindsided on this.
Thank you.
Alderman Ewington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of ones that I've been wondering about these for a while. With, I wanted to ask, just on the dog control side of things, how many times or how many infringement notices have we had for people being off-leash or using the beach areas outside of the restricted times in summer? Because I quite often see lots of people not following the rules at times and certainly on some of the tracks and trials. So I'd be interested in finding that out because we've got to be addressing that issue as part of our tracks and trials meeting coming up on Thursday. So it'd really be interesting to have that information before we sit down and go through that process.
Mr. Too, can you help there?
To you, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one on notice, I haven't got the precise details.
And if you could note the timeframe for that too, please.
Is there a little time delay?
Yeah, fine.
I should be able to, I'll be able to email it out to you, Alderman Ewington, tomorrow.
That would be appreciated. And just a follow-up to that, Mr. Mayor, was just in relation to how many hours we have ranges available to go out and to look at certain areas and just some information on, you know, the hours spent patrolling some of the tracks and restricted areas and certainly some of the beaches as well, and whether we use things like drones or anything like that to assist in that process. It'd be interesting to know that information.
Again, I'll reply, back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman James.
Thank you, I think I'm on speaker. Firstly, my question through you to Mr. Graham in his capacity as manager of engineering. Mr. Graham, can you advise when work will start on the boom at the South Oval?
Through, Mr. Mayor, my understanding, it's in March, but I don't have an exact date, so once I find that out, I'll inform Alderman.
Thank you. My second question through you, Mr. Mayor, is to Mr. Lovell in his capacity as manager of planning. Mr. Lovell, I'm just wondering as to whether or not, in the motion that was passed tonight regarding the urban growth boundary at 52 Richardson's or the seeking to extend it, that part B of the officer's recommendation said, it states that the minister be provided with copies of all documents and reports in response to his request for information. Would that include the results of the survey plus the state agencies or the government, yeah, state instrumentality's agencies, their comments, as well as the response from those other councils that did not support the extension of the urban growth boundary? I just would like to have confirmation that all those documents, all that information, that will be forwarded as part of the council's decision this evening, particularly in response to B and C.
Mr. Lovell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, all of the documents that have been presented to the council will be provided to the minister.
Thank you. Alderman Kendy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Graham, can I get an update on the works being carried out at Marsh Street, please?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I'll have to check that one up, but that's by a private developer. I don't believe that's not a council project.
So there's nothing to, there's no council work being undertaken at Marsh Street at the moment?
There's a tender which is closed for work on Spit Farm Road, but I believe that's further south than the immediate Marsh Street precinct, but I will double check that and put the answer in the next council meeting minutes.
If you could, that would be great, thank you. That's all from me.
Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. The first one relates to the maintenance of public open space. I know that road verge mowing is a perennial problem, but the nature of Glebe Hill in particular is that the developer at the time provided significant public open space, well and above what is normally provided. And as an open plan sort of development with lots of public open space, I'm just getting every year and every week and every month during this thing complaints about the maintenance schedule. Is it possible that we could perhaps review the maintenance schedule for these areas which are used by a lot of pedestrian traffic and frequented by children and things like that to ensure that those areas get priority treatment over road verges?
And Mr. Lovell, sorry, Mr. Graham.
Through, we certainly can review that and if an increased level of service is required, it'll probably be a matter for the council budgets as well. So I'll bring that through to the next budget discussions.
Thank you.
My second question relates, and it's on the fly, I hear your comments about Belraye Arena and that they are somehow other part of Stadium Tas. Now, the last I heard was that Cricket Australia hadn't responded or wasn't in discussions about being part of Stadium Australia. Are they engaged with Stadium Tasmania or not?
Look, I don't know, Alderman Warren. I do know that, you know, we have been advised that Belraye Global is scheduled to become part of Stadium Tasmania and that we will be consulted once decision-making gets further down the track. I've been assured that that's going to continue to be the case, notwithstanding the announcement that's breaking concerning a new AFL stadium. So all I can do is say at this stage, I expect that Belraye Global is going to transfer, but I honestly don't know to what extent there have been negotiations with Cricket Tasmania.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question specifically related to the engagement with Cricket Australia because I've been getting a lot of feedback to suggest they're not interested.
Yeah, I'm not aware of where negotiations with the Cricket fraternity has been or landed. Alderman Piers.
Thank you, Mayor. Kangaroo Bay, can people still park behind the black white fence down there? And if so, I imagine if they can, it's still for free?
Mr. Graham.
Through, Mr. Mayor, I certainly believe so, Alderman Piers. I haven't heard of any advice that it's not available for free parking, but I'll double check.
May I suggest we actually put the word free? We've got parking, but it's right next to a four-hour sign. So it makes it look as if you're parking there, but it's for four hours. So I'd just like to say free, so we can get some of that movement away from Kangaroo Bay, like the playground and all that, because I think people would park there, they know it's free, mainly to be used for ferries, ferry transport anyway.
Perhaps, Alderman Piers, you could talk to Mr. Graham offline about the exact area you're talking about there?
Oh, it's a car park, we all know where it is, behind the black white fence, but...
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not sure exactly in my mind which area you're talking about.
I think it's lot four or lot nine of Kangaroo Bay Drive.
Yeah, that's it.
I certainly know, I can certainly liaise on that one with Alderman Piers as well.
Okay.
Mayor, look, I've got a minor staff issue, nothing with any staff online, could I just raise that in close business?
Sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Van Beter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following on from Alderman James's question in relation to 52 Richardson's Road, will the minister be provided with the spreadsheets as to the verbatim comments both for and against the proposed changes?
Mr. Lovell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that would be the intention, I think was discussed in the report. And the purpose, one of the reasons for doing so would be, well, to reveal the work that was done by the council, but also to avoid the need for the minister to feel that he might need to do further consultation and therefore delay the project further.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Van Beter. Alderman Walker.
Yes, thank you. My question is in relation to committee structures. This has been an interesting term and I know... This has been an interesting term and I know that COVID, the budgeting, the preparations, the adoptions have taken a fair bit of our headspace through this process. But there was talk of a review and look at some changes. When might this occur, especially in relation to the fact that we're not here for much longer?
I think we'll have to take out a notice. The general manager was personally involved with that process and he's on leave at the moment. But we'll make sure that we bring you all up to date on where that's at.
I'd, I'd appreciate that because it, you know, it's something I've been, it's been several terms now and it just gets bigger. My second question, and it was alluded to by Alderman Yarington, that there is a, an out-of-session meeting of tracks and trails, I think, occurring this week. That's something I don't think's happened in my time. Can the, can be confirmed that this is potentially looking at changing the default status of raps to, in relation to dog control? And that it might be a case that we are going to move from a default position of largely off, off-lead exercise that is then sort of, sort of advanced to see whether that's appropriate and move to a default position of, of dogs prohibited and then move to see whether that defaults to actually off-lead could be possible?
Alderman Yarington, are you able to help there?
Sorry, Mr. Meek, and Alderman Walker? Repeat the question?
I, I might try rephrase it. I, it's my understanding that this out-of-session meeting is in relation to the classification of RAPs and dogs. And I'm just trying to ascertain at the current stage, I think, when a, when a, when a plan is put in place, the default position is usually that dogs are off-lead and this might be flipping that to the opposite.
Well, look, I, I don't expect that we'll be making a decision. We've been asked by council to consider that as part of the tracks and trails network and the conflict between dogs, horses, you know, and some of the, you know, protection of native wildlife that we need to consider. So, look, there's going to, you know, we've just got, we have never, as a committee, delved that deep into this issue in terms of the legalities of that in relation to how the raps are done and what our obligations are in relation to, you know, biodiversity and protecting the natural environment. So, I, I, look, I'm, we've got a lot of work to do in this space, you know, we, you know, we made the changes in the last meeting. You know, we're at the last minute and the committee and the tracks and trails committee had a position on where they thought it should go. But obviously there's some, some other policies that are conflicting of council and I think it's going to require a lot more investigation by all of us, which I'm sure we'll obviously have to come back to council and the better understanding we've got. And I've still got a lot more reading into some of the things to, to get my head around it all. So it will all come back before any decision is made. But, yeah, it's a, it's a tricky situation because like I said, there's a conflict of policies and we've got to try and nut our way through and find a compromise for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My intention wasn't to be grilling the, the committee chair. I was asking more in the general, general term of the officers. So I, I think a slight supplementary on that would be, can you provide comfort that noting the tracks and trails is an advisory committee? Any change of any stature would indeed come before us as, as elected representatives?
Yeah, look, I can give you that absolute assurance that, that any policy change will be a matter for council.
Thank you.
Alderman Warren?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Can you please give me an update? And perhaps this is for the general, acting general manager. Just clarify the status of the NISH report. Is that a public document? Is it available to the public?
Could Alderman Warren please clarify on the NISH report that she's relating?
So the one that was done is the, the structure plan for Drury Point?
Mr. Paskey, are you able to answer that question?
Through you, acting general manager, it might be best answered by Ross Lovell.
Thank you. Mr. Lovell, can you help?
Yes, through Mr. Mayor. The work on that project was suspended with council's approval. And so the, until the, the work on the Skylands project was done, ostensibly to see how the works may merge or not. So the, the NISH study has not been completed and has not been received by the council. So at this point, it's not a public, there's no public document.
Okay, thank you. And my second question also through you, Mr. Mayor, to the acting general manager. We've had some discussion over the last few weeks about the impact of COVID on the workforce. And, you know, anecdotally speaking to people, I've heard reports people having miled through to quite severe occurrences of the virus, even when fully vaccinated. I, I just wondered if you could give us a flavour of how council is travelling at the moment from a workforce point of view?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Alderman Warren. I'm assuming you're referring to our council staff who perhaps have been impacted. Having myself had the virus, I can speak with great personal experience in relation to, to the symptoms that I experienced, which sort of certainly knocked me about for a good 10 days and I'm still suffering from that. I think they're calling it long COVID. I can't really speak to the experiences of specific staff members, given that that is private and confidential. But I do know that, you know, we do have officers who have had the, the virus and, and similar to myself, they have been able to return to the workforce within that, that week, 10-day period.
My, my question was more to whether we were down a significant number of staff or whether we were starting to return to normal numbers?
Again, we don't, in terms of staff taking sick leave, you don't actually collate specifically as to what their illness is if they're taking sick leave. So I couldn't tell you with any certainty as to how many staff members have actually contracted the virus. Of course, you know, we do monitor our sick leave each, each day and we are experiencing, I guess, an uptick in the, in those numbers as to whether or not they have the disease or they are a close contact and therefore having to make alternative arrangements, it's difficult to say at this stage.
No, that's fine. I wasn't interested in the details, just the general flavour of whether it was still having a impact on our availability of staff.
I believe, I believe in general it is, Alderman Warren, so thank you, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our open council meeting. So at this point, I'd like to thank the members of the public who have stayed with us and ask that the feed be closed.